Okay. Good evening and welcome to the Charlton Board of Selectmen's meeting, April 23rd. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to have a moment of silence for Norm and Dugas, who passed away, I believe, about a week ago. Norm was on the Conservation Commission. I believe he participated with the Finance Committee also at certain times, and he was a very active member in the community and at town meeting. And he will be sorely missed. So, moment of silence, please. Okay. For tonight's agenda, we have minutes of the regular meeting from April 9th, 2019. Community relations announcements and open forum. And we'd just like, on the open forum, we went back and looked at the policy on open forum. We'd like everybody to keep it to two to three minutes on open forum. If it's going to be longer than that, please ask to be on the agenda, and we will accommodate the agenda, accommodate you on the agenda. But the policy is, and it's two to three minutes. Appointments and resignation. We have an appointment for the Conservation Commission alternate. Scheduled appointments. At 7:00 PM, we have Fourscore Holdings LLC request to amend the host agreement to allow for the inclusion of recreational retail marijuana establishment. At 7:15 PM, we have G3 Wellness LLC. They're requesting to locate a retail and medical marijuana establishment at Six City Depot Road. We did have Northeast Energy posted at 7:30, but they've been rescheduled for a later date. New business, we have the Spartan Race Special Liquor License/Traffic and Crowd Management Permit. We have Fishing Day Traffic and Crowd Management Permit. Legal fees for fiscal year 2019. We did have a fourth item on the new business, Technology Town Email System, and we've rescheduled that to a later date. On the old business, we have the Planning Board Council for Subdivision Site Plan. Number two was Investigation into the Planning Board matter. Number three, Notice from the Attorney General Regarding Rob Lomansky's Request for Reconsideration. Number four, Fiscal Year 20 Annual Town Meeting Warrant for Posting. Committee Reports, Marijuana Advisory Committee Update. If anybody has anything to discuss on the Board of Selectmen Policy Review. Then we're going to move on to the Student Select Persons Report. Update the Board on Dudley Charlton Regional School District Events and Activities. Other business unknown at the time of posting. Next meeting announcement, Annual Town Election, Saturday, May 4th, 2019, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM at the Heritage School. Regular Board of Selectmen's meeting, May 7th, 2019, 6:30 PM in the Selectmen's Meeting Room. And we, the Board will be adjourning to go into Executive Session under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation and its insurance with unions and non-unions if an unopened meeting may be, have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position or litigating position of the public party. And that's where we are. So, do we have a motion on the minutes from April 19?
Second.
We have motion as second. Are there any discussions? Hearing none, seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Upstaying?
Okay. Absentee ballots are available in the town clerk's office or by mailing an application found on the website. Absentee ballots cannot be taken with you. You have to vote in the office or they can be mailed to you. Dog licenses are now late and include a $10 late fee. Please pay online, by mail, or at the town clerk's office. Candidates night, next Monday, April 29th, 2019, 6:00 PM at the library at Dexter Hall. The Town of Charlton's Health and Wellness Committee invites town employees and their families to the annual Health and Welfare Wellness Fair, April 30th, 2019, 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM at the Dexter Hall in the Charlton Public Library. 2019 Annual Town Election, Saturday, May 4th, 2019, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM at the Heritage School. And the 2019 Annual Town Meeting, Monday, May 20th, 2019, 7:00 PM Charlton Middle School. At the Board's April 9th, 2019 meeting, Mr. Singer requested that we hire an independent auditor to investigate our board and our communications with the Planning Board. Due to staff being on vacation, this item will be on the May 7th, 2019 agenda. The Recycling Committee, once again, has items for sale. The items include ceramic and bamboo kitchen counter scrap buckets for $18, automobile trash containers for $4 and $7, jute totes for $4. You can view the items at the entrance to the town hall by the Selectmen's Office and purchase them in the Selectmen's Office. Raffle tickets can be purchased for a rain barrel or an indoor/outdoor electric composter for $2 each, or three for $5. The recycling items are made available through grant funding by the Mass Department of Environmental Protection. Proceeds will go towards the Town of Charlton's Recycling Committee. Items and raffle chances will also be available at this Saturday's Earth Fest on the Town Common and at the Blueberry Festival July 28th at the Activity Center, where winning tickets will be drawn. Does anybody else have any announcements?
Reminder, what Mary reminded you about the warrant being posted at a later date?
Yes. And the Fiscal Year 20 Annual Town Meeting warrant, it will not be on the website until next week due to the webmaster being on vacation.
Through the chair?
Yes.
April 26th and April 27th at Shepherd Hill, the Drummer Club is putting on The Real Inspector Hound by Tom Stobart and A Mad Breakfast by A.M. Gray, both shows at 7:00 PM. And May 3rd is the annual district art show.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Singer?
Since Todd's sitting right there, I don't want to steal his thunder, but there is a free fishing day coming up. Todd does a lot for the town and the things he arranges, whether it's fly tying classes or free fishing days. We owe him a lot of gratitude.
Thank you.
So, I guess I'll open community relationships and open forum.
Go ahead.
So, with that, we do have Fish Day coming up on May 4th at Snow's Pond. That's a family fun fish day. I would like everybody to come to that and enjoy it. We also opened Fay Mountain Farm that day. We have tours. Come look around the farm. We link up with the Ryder Tavern and the Old Schoolhouse and trying to keep that whole neighborhood doing some type of community event for the, for the Day for Fish Day. We're going to be stocking the pond on May 2nd with Charlton Middle School Science Club. We test the water. We come down with mass fishing wildlife, and then we make sure the water's good to go. Once the water's good to go, we stock the fish on May 2nd. So, thanks, Dave. I know that that's one of your favorite events of the year.
Everything you do for the town.
So, we also have, this Saturday coming up, we have our Earth Festival and road cleanup. I encourage everyone to go online, look at our road sign-up map, get it, go to the road right out in front of your house. Let's clean it up. When you're done with that, come up to the common. We have a lot of earth-centric stuff going on for information. Fay Mountain Farm's going to be up there. You can learn how to feed yourself a little bit better than, say, give your money to the pharmacist later on down the street. I think that might come in handy. So, hopefully, everyone, I'll see everyone this Saturday and then the following Saturday for both of our town events. I said, thank you, Mr. Singer.
Thanks, Todd.
Thanks, Todd. Is there anybody here for open forum?
No open forum, but can you guys talk into your microphones? I have a hard time hearing.
Sure.
Please. Thank you.
Hi, how are you?
Fine, thank you. How are you?
Good.
Good. Noreen Johnson Smith, I live at 136 Dresser Hill Road, and because it looks like this is probably not a public hearing on the marijuana presentations tonight, I just wanted to take a moment during open forum, and I'm watching the clock, to just offer my one-minute opinion. I know that we have a town election coming up on May 4th, and the last time that I attended town meeting, a majority of the voters in the town rejected the idea of adult recreational retail sales in Charlton. And it's been placed on the town ballot, I understand, for consideration on Fishing Day. So, while families are out fishing, they should remember to come vote. And so, for the majority of voters who turned that down, I would just ask your consideration, I see we have two requests for retail licenses being forwarded this evening, and it makes sense to me as a voter that the Board of Selectmen would wait until you hear the disposition of the voters in the Town of Charlton before approving anything that may be retracted or changed if, in fact, a majority of the voters disagree with that direction. So, I would just ask that you withhold those items to your next month meeting because it's not that far off, and the town has an interest in this and an interest in voting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen.
Good evening. Kristin Castigian, Carroll Hill Road. I would echo the same as Noreen. I would say that the timing for a couple of the agenda items tonight's a little, it's a little ahead of the game. Let the, let the voters have a vote. We've been waiting about, you know, two years on that. So, it would be nice to see what the town really says. Either way, then you have a definitive directive, right?
Thank you.
And then, I don't know if Selectwoman Noble could shed any light on, at the last meeting, you had, you had said that you were a former investigator and that you had, you know, pulled some call logs. I didn't know if you had any outcome of that or...
I have no information to offer on that at this time. Thank you for your question.
Okay. And then also, you had shortly thereafter voted against doing an investigation. I was just...
Again, I have no information to offer about that at this time. Thank you, Kristin.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else for open forum? Okay. None. Okay. Appointment for the alternate member of the Conservation Commission. At the annual town meeting held on May 21st, 2018, the town voted to petition for a legislative act to authorize the Board of Selectmen to appoint two alternate Conservation Commission members to serve staggered terms not to exceed three years, which was approved on January 1st, 2019. Attached is a talent bank form from Bonnie Dunn Drake of Grandview Ave, seeking to be appointed as an alternate member of the Conservation Commission. The Conservation Commission is recommending the appointment as well. This will need to be a joint appointment of the Board of Selectmen and the Conservation Commission. Todd?
Mr. Chair, the Conservation Commission requested the opportunity to have a reserve or an alternate member just to expedite a lot of our processes. So, we have some members that come on vacation, they get sick, whatever, and sometimes we may not have a quorum that evening, and we'll have to push those projects another two weeks down the line. So, by having an alternate member, what that'll allow us is to keep that alternate member up to date with everything that's going on, and then if we needed that person for a quorum or whatever, we'd be able to bring them right in and keep, keep the projects going streamlined.
Okay. Is there a quorum for the Conservation Commission here?
Yes. Yes. I group right here.
Okay. Could we call the Conservation Commission to order?
So, this is Mitch Dunn, Ed Nowak, and Robert Hartwig.
So, what is the Board of Selectmen's wishes on the appointment of Bonnie Dunn Drake to the Conservation Commission as an alternate?
Through the chair?
Ms. Noble?
Sorry, do you want to go? I would make a motion that we appoint Bonnie Dunn Drake to the Conservation Commission as an alternate.
Second.
The Board of Selectmen has a motion as second, any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Now, you have to vote too.
You want to lead the meeting, Mitch?
Yeah.
Just have somebody make a motion.
Yeah. We need a motion to...
Okay. I approve Bonnie Dunn Drake. As an alternate member to the Conservation Commission.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Yes.
Vote?
Say aye?
Aye.
Unanimous.
So, it was approved unanimously?
Okay. Excellent.
We'll call vote.
I don't believe that the Conservation Commission has posted a meeting for tonight. We don't meet tonight.
Will you just try? No.
I believe we did. I have to double check, I'm sorry. So, I believe my clerk posted it. I don't have an answer for that question.
It's on the website.
So, you know what we'll do? To appease the people in the audience, we'll just rescind this, and I'll double check to see if it was posted, and we'll come back and do it again at the following meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Sorry.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Before you leave, through the chair, is it appropriate for them to go ahead and vote, and then you can ratify it at another meeting?
No.
No? You can't do that?
No.
Could I request that we place on the agenda for the next Selectmen's meeting?
Absolutely.
Just to clarify this, and we'll be sure we're posted, and we will really make an extreme effort to round people up.
Excellent. Thank you.
Because, I have to tell you, the average age of this committee is somewhere north of 70. We need time off for joint replacements and stuff like that.
With the rescind.
Through the chair, if you're unsure, if you think you posted, do you think you posted? I mean, because I think Mr. Selectman Singer's checking on it. Oh, Karen.
Yeah. Was there, is there a question if someone's posted?
Did Conservation post the meetings for tonight?
I think they...
It's a joint appointment too. It's a joint appointment. So, you, would you rescind?
I think so.
Okay.
I would rescind my motion.
We're going to hold for one second while the court checks to see if the Conservation Commission has posted.
Do it again.
Thank you. Okay.
What?
Okay. Todd?
So, again, we'll just, I'll do like I said earlier, I'll have my clerk post it, and we'll return it two weeks, and we'll do the drill over again.
Okay.
Thank you. Sorry for the inconvenience.
That's all right. Thanks, Joe. Appreciate it.
Thank you. It's good to see you.
Do I have a motion to rescind the vote?
So, move.
We have motion to rescind the vote. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. We have motion as second. Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next time.
Yep.
We have 10 minutes.
We have 10 minutes before our next appointment, so I'm just going to make a little announcement. As everybody knows, Joe Safar, this is his last meeting, and Joe has, from a, from a young age, been very involved in the town Finance Committee.
He just called you old.
No.
I feel it.
And, and, you know, with the Board of Selectmen, he's been a stellar member of this Board even before I got on it. He has always tried to do the right thing and has always listened to everybody's discussion, and he's eloquently explained his reasoning as to one way or the other why he has voted that way. And I, as Chair, just want to thank him for, for the time that I spent on the Board when he was Chair or Vice Chair, and I learned a lot from, from watching Joe. Very even-tempered, very understanding, and, and has done a very, very good job for the town. So, Joe, thank you. You know... I think Mary has cake, but when do you want to do cake, Mary?
Now, or when you start it?
Well, then feel free.
And can I just say something?
Sure. And, and I know David's been on the Board a long time with Joe, and I know Deb has something to say, and I'm sure Karen does too, so go ahead.
There are people who sit on the sidelines and throw arrows and barbs, and then there are people who actually get up and do something. And that's you, Joe. You got up and did something, and you still will, and you always will because it's in your DNA. You're not somebody who sits on the sideline and complains about things. You're the person who gets up and gets it done, and it has been my privilege to sit next to you for two years. And I'm going to miss you so much, and I'm not going to cry. But if I was going to cry over someone's leaving, it would most certainly be yours, young man. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
David? I'll be brief, but I will simply point out that you've been through a lot, and you've overseen a lot. I think when you walk away, you have a lot to be proud of. You were part of a team, and not only represented the town day-to-day and represented all the taxpayers who live here, but you also were a key part of the team that steered this town through probably some of the, if not the biggest economic downturn since the Great Depression without a tax increase, fee increase, or a single layoff. And I think the taxpayers and everyone here have a lot to be grateful for, for that stewardship.
Absolutely. Thank you. We had a good team. It made it easy.
And I too, Joe, would like to thank you for your professionalism. I admire everything that you've done for the town. You've been so involved for so very long, and I sincerely wish you the best in whatever your future holds.
Thank you.
So, we have cake. We have cake for everybody, and it's really good cake. It came from the Italian bakery in town. So, would you like to cut the cake?
Absolutely.
All right. Meetings are better with cake. That's all I'm saying. So, we have five minutes. Everybody is welcome to join in. I got your badge, bud.[1363.12] And I too, Joe, would like to thank you for your professionalism. I admire everything that you've done for the town. You've been so involved for so very long, and I sincerely wish you the best in, in whatever your future holds.
Thank you.
So, we have cake. We have cake for everybody, and it's really good cake. It came from the Italian bakery in town. So, would you like to cut the cake?
Absolutely.
All right. Meetings are better with cake, that's all I'm saying. So, we have five minutes. Everybody is welcome to join in. I got your badge, well.
Cake? Here, I gotta choose my count. I still got treehouse in the fridge.
And we're back at seven oh one.
Tell me later.
With that, we have scheduled appointments, Fourscore Holding LLC.
Mr. Glickman? I think that's Attorney Glickman.
Attached is a letter received in our office on April eighth, twenty nineteen, from Fourscore Holdings LLC formally requesting to amend its existing host-to-community agreement with the town to allow for the inclusion of recreational retail marijuana establishment at its proposed marijuana establishment to be located at one forty-four Sturbridge Road. They're respectfully requesting that the Board of Selectmen take this request under consideration and allow the applicant's representative to appear before the Board. They have provided you with a set of plans identifying the portion of the building that will house the proposed recreational retail dispensary component of the marijuana establishment. Fourscore recently received approvals for its proposed marijuana cultivation and production use at the property, and intends to file applications for both licenses with the Massachusetts Cannabis Control Commission as soon as possible. They're scheduled for seven o'clock. Gentlemen.
Evening, members of the Board. Mr. Chairman, thank you very much for having us. Daniel Glickman, member of Fourscore. As the Chairman just mentioned, we're seeking and respectfully requesting an amendment to our existing host-community agreement to permit the operation of an adult-use marijuana establishment at one forty-four Sturbridge Road, which would be adding the, the final suite of services for this establishment, making it a fully vertically integrated cultivation, production, and retail establishment. As the Board's well aware, our initial proposal to the town included a retail component to this facility, and, and again, it included both the cultivation, production, and, and retail at this site. And we were informed after a town meeting had reduced the number of retail establishments in town from three to two, that Valley Green Grow would be receiving that second retail license, because they had contacted the Board and the town prior to us, but that we would be next in line for the next available retail license. So, we wanted to make our intentions for a retail license perfectly clear to this Board with, given the fact that Valley Green Grow has actually not had and does not have a retail application pending before town, and with the new warrant article proposing to increase the number of retail establishments to three. You know, we came this evening to, to really seek guidance from this Board on, on how best to move forward. We feel as though we've been, you know, very transparent with the Board and, and done our best to follow the guidance of this Board and the letter of the law here in Charlton, and we want to make sure we continue that process moving forward. So, so we're here to, you know, request formally the amendment to our host-community agreement and, and seek any guidance from this Board. We hope that the Board would, would entertain our request. Certainly, we feel as though we're well-suited and situated as a, a team of experts to propose a, a retail establishment at this site and, and bring that project to fruition in this heavily regulated and highly competitive market. So, with that, we would entertain any further discussion from the Board and comments from the members of the Board. So, thank you again for having us tonight.
Okay.
Dave?
Couple of comments, I guess, and I'll, I'll share my comment and my concern. The comment is, and, and yes, I think you guys have been forced right up front, everything by the book, I's dotted, T's crossed, and you've already shown that everything you're trying to do is to be done in the manner of a good neighbor and a good partner of the town, and I think that every member of the Board here appreciates that. Right now, and I, I also appreciate you coming forward to, again, clarify your desire to have that potentially second or third license if it becomes available, because I think the fact that you're here now saying that down the road could be very important. The last town meeting, and again, this is just me, the last town meeting, the, the community said two, and so my caution to you is, I guess, at the moment, that's still the status quo. My concern is doing anything without knowing for sure, to your point, that may be a contractual violation on our part with another party that could get the town in trouble, also with an upcoming town meeting where if a vote passes, that becomes irrelevant because you have a third license which you've already made clear you wanted. So, my view on that would be, thank you for coming forward. I think the fact that you made the public statement at this meeting solidifies your position for the third, which you were already told, I think, and the Board already, already told you that as well, but to see how the vote goes at town meeting, to see if we get, A, the third license approved by the voters, and during that, that interim time to find out what are, I be careful, I don't want to go down a certain road I'm recused from, but what are our obligations to other parties based upon what's happened and what are, what can we and can we not do if we can find out about that? Because to, to their point, how long do we leave other parties in limbo while we wait for something else that may or may never happen? So, I'd like to get some direction from Council on that, so that, you know, we can have more meaningful discussions.
The Chair, I would just like everybody to know that Fourscore came to the most recent Marijuana Advisory Committee meeting, and they handed out blueprints of the proposed retail establishment, which are available in the Selectmen's office. And based on the conversations we had there at the, at the meeting last week, it's my understanding that even if recreational retail is not available, you would still want to go with a, a medical model.
Yeah, I think, I think that's correct. The, the procedure right now for medical facilities is a little bit in limbo, so this Board may be aware, previously, the Department of Public Health managed the medical marijuana program in Massachusetts in December. That program shifted to the Cannabis Control Commission. So, right now, the licensing process for medical marijuana is, is a little bit in a gray area, specifically with respect to the vertical integration requirements. And although this site is vertically integrated, I think our intention would be to wait until that actual licensing process gets clarified. What, what we expect, many of us in the industry expect, is that the medical vertical integration requirement will sort of go away, it will be, you know, a cultivation license, a production license, an adult-use retail, or a medical retail. Right now, they're kind of too separate.
Yes.
And so, it would be a little bit too complicated to start down the medical path now. Granted, we would need a retail license in order to seek the medical cultivation and production licenses, but, you know, I think there would, there is some sort of determination as to wh- when that license would be filed, but absolutely, we intend to have both medical and adult use, or just medical, to the extent it's available.
Right, so, so when you look at these plans, if you get a chance to go into the Selectmen's office and look at the plans, you will see there is a small rectangular portion of your facility that will be some sort of dispensary, whether it's just medical or medical and, and adult use. And you're still on, on track to open up in 2020?
Certainly, I mean, yes, as best as we hope. You know, the, the state licensing process has been significantly slower than I think a lot of people anticipated.
This is true.
Particularly for those that weren't medical marijuana establishments and opened prior to a certain timeline before the law passed. We're not in that category, certainly. So, you know, right now, we're looking at like a six to nine-month backlog just to receive a provisional license from the state in order to start building. You know, I would defer to, to Kurt Smith on the exact timeline, but our goal is absolutely to be open in 2020.
So, going back to what Selectman Singer said, how will it affect your, your rollout date if we wait until after the town election, before the Board comes back together to make a decision about amending the host agreement?
Well, we would certainly be open to, to answer the question directly, I don't think it would have a major impact on our timeline.
Thank you.
We would love to start negotiations, if possible, so that if and when the, the Board were to consider the amended host agreement, that, you know, it might be an efficient process upon that determination, but again, we're here before the Board tonight to seek guidance and, and clarification as to our intentions, so.
And I, I see nothing wrong with, with being prepared and proactive, which has been your approach from the very beginning.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Karen?
Yeah, I, I too, I want to thank you for your efforts, and I echo Selectman Singer's comments, actually. I would also request, I think, that you do come back after our, the town votes, and I would encourage you to do that. The other thing I wanted to ask for, for clarification, so everyone watching understands about the licenses, right now, can you tell us, the Chairman, I'm putting you on the spot, that the licenses right now, we have one coming in, and that's for formerly health-wise.
Right, VGG.
And so, and when we, when we refer to these, what's really confusing is when we refer to the entities, sometimes they've changed names two or three times, if we can formerly known as, formerly known as, so it's.
Green Gold Group.
They've only changed their name once.
Only once, okay.
Like the artist formerly known as Prince.
That's one.
Correct.
That's two.
And VGG.
Okay, but are we legally, to, to the, to the comments made?
And I believe that is the question that Selectman Singer has raised without phrasing any names.
Okay.
So, I think that's where we are now. We have to find out, you know, what's going on.
And, and I bring that up because, obviously, listening to the, your rollout date, you know, your plans, if we truly are looking for the revenue, let's be blunt, they're ready to hit the ground running, why would we hold it up?
Just to that point, the next meeting, two weeks, between now and then, in the interim, can we get some guidance from Council?
Absolutely.
On our obligation to something that's in limbo?
Yes.
Yep.
Mary is on it.
And I have, I have actually spoken briefly with Town Council on that subject, so I think he's, I don't want to speak for him, he's obviously not here this evening, but certainly, I believe he's, he's ready to have that discussion with the members of the Board, so.
Okay, excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming forward.
Yep, thank you very much.
Yep.
Have a good night.
Okay.
Well, and thank you for the cake.
Yeah.
Oh, you're very welcome, enjoy. Take a piece to go.
Okay. Seven fifteen PM. G Three Wellness LLC requests to locate a retail and medical marijuana establishment at Six City Depot Road. Attached is a letter dated April tenth, twenty nineteen, received by email on that date from G Three Wellness LLC respectfully submitting to, the attached letter of intent to apply for a retail cannabis license and medical marijuana establishment at Six City Depot Road. G Three Wellness has an agreement with the lesser of the property at Six City Depot Road and have asked to come before the Board to discuss the required steps needed.
Through the Chair?
Gentlemen.
I'm sorry, just to, I have to recuse myself. I, I know I'm not required to let you know why, but I, in the spirit of transparency, I will let you know that I'm very good friends with the, one of the owners of the building, so I will just step down.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Rob, who's talking?
I am. Wanted to introduce myself. My name is Dan Adams. I am the manager of G Three. I am a local guy from Shrewsbury, Massachusetts, and we are here tonight before you to seek a, a license for the retail location of Six Depot Road here in Charlton. I figured I could give you a brief description of myself and who G Three is as a great introduction for tonight. I know you have a lot going on with other licenses, but I think it would be a great time to introduce us, get us in the realm, and see where we go from there. G Three Wellness will be a locally owned and operated company. Personally, I've worked in and around the Charlton community for many years. Those years have gone back to high school, working various construction and landscape jobs around here. Our Board is all local as well. We have individuals that are in the five to six years of high-level management in the marijuana industry and have operated some of the most successful retail marijuana establishments in the Northeast. I came personally into this industry about four years ago as a consultant for a cannabis facility. Through my landscape construction company, I consulted in regards to sightline problems that our state had mandated for that property. Through that location, I began talking to facility operators, and I realized that some of the practices in which were being used in today's, you know, situations on these facilities were really basement level, and I was concerned how they would turn over to a large-scale grow facility with that stature. Since then, on the consulting basis, I've worked on many avenues through the cannabis industry. I have worked on the grow side, as well as the retail side, and following that through to the experience and with the clients as well, so I've seen the whole process through on that. And during that time, I've met a lot of great folks in the industry, and a lot of these great folks are now part of our Board of Advisors that we have formed for our company. The company was formed just about five months ago, and through that, this group of individuals have encouraged me to become a owner-operator business and manage this through. The local industry experience operators have been at high-level managers, like I've said. They have handled all phases of these buildings, from licensing, design, build, funding, and obviously the operations. Together, we have developed a three-hundred-page manual of the industry's best practices. We have secured our startup funding and are in the process of securing our other operational locations. We've intended to become a vertically integrated company, and, which means our goal to, be to grow the most of the products we sell, which is the term seed to sell. Upon licensing, the advisory board contracts will commence, and additional funding will be secured to go along all agreements in place for other industry experience operators to cover all key areas of the business. My understanding is that Six City Depot Road is zoned properly for a marijuana establishment, and there is a retail license available in town. I have worked with Mr. Lemansky here to secure a five-thousand-square-foot portion of the mill to operate within and upon an approved HCA with the Town of Charlton, and a community outreach meeting will finish our application to the state. Using our experience as true operators, we look forward to working with you as we would partner in this process to be a great experience to both the consumers and the community.
Thanks, Dan. Appreciate you coming forward. Mr. Singer?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I always appreciate a, a local who wants to open up their business and keep it local. What I would say, though, is, to one of your comments, we don't have a retail license available at the moment. That could change in the future.
Sure.
I'll tell you the same thing I, I just said to someone else very recently. It's a good thing to come here and, for lack of a better way of putting it, get in line. So, right now, we have a town meeting who voted to allow two. One, again, which we've already discussed, is, let's just say, in limbo. We don't know what's happening with that. There's a movement, I guess, or, or a, a oracle on town meeting to allow for a third. Before we could move to have a fourth, or a new third, that really is going to depend on how everything else shakes out, and that's really about the, I think, I think I could tell you, honestly and fairly, at this point.
Mr. Sappolich?
With the other applicant who spoke recently, if there was not a retail license available, would you still pursue medical, a, a medical dispensary?
Yes.
Okay.
If there was no sales available, would you still pursue just grow only?
Yes, that is an option.
Now, this is, it's, it's nice to meet you. This is the first I've really heard of this or gotten any information about this. Have you reached out to, to our, our Health Director in town, Jim Philbrook?
We have not yet.
I'd suggest you do that sooner rather than later.
Sure.
Just for clarification, confused here, is a retail license for medical is different than a retail?
I believe.
Yes, it is.
So, that means that there are two grow licenses, two retail licenses, and two medical licenses?
No, medical, I don't think, believe you can limit.
That's true.
I'm gonna defer to somebody from the.
No, you, you can't, you can't limit medical licenses. You, you can't put a barrier to that in your town, but recreational retail is a different story. And what you're talking about, the, the limit to, to two or three, that's adult use, also known as recreational, and that is limited to two, unless something happens at town meeting.
And you guys may correct me, but I think also, one of the problems we, we've had, at least with the CCC, because it's always easy dealing with the state, and they're always very clear, is that you can, yes, you can go down that road with someone on medical, so that we. you can go down that road with someone on medical, so we had this conversation a couple of years ago, but then once they're in with medical, you can't stop them from doing recreational, and there was a lot of confusion around that, at least at the time, if there was. And so that made some of us also very cautious about even allowing medical just unfettered, without wording and everything else, because if, if you come in on one, then we can't stop you from having the recreational, which we wanted to stop you from having without the town's approval first, it's almost like just backdooring the system.
So, the way it was at the beginning was that if someone got a, a license to have a medical dispensary and it was before a certain date, it was April of, I don't want to, I want to say 2017. If it was before that, then they were automatically grandfathered in for retail, but I don't believe that's the case now, David. But I can...
Can we get clarification?
I will get clarification on that, yeah.
And again, just to carry that a little further, if I may, the, the, the green gold down at the city, are they a medical, or are they a medical that's going to be turned into a retail?
They are both. It's, I was gonna let people know at the end of the meeting, but they'll roll out as medical first and then gradually phase in the recreational.
And that was part of your application?
After they come back to the planning board?
Yes, after they come back to the planning board, of course.
Right, and Mr. Chair, so Rob, I think that was one of the ones I, I was alluding to about had come in earlier, where if they came in under one, when you couldn't say no, and you couldn't stop them from going the other way, that was during that time.
So if we had multiple CBS Walgreens in town and they were going to go and sell medical cannabis, then that can't, there, there's no cap on that? They're allowed to receive a license as long as they follow all the procedures and there's no limit?
I haven't heard of them doing that. I know that they're, from what I've read, the big-box drugstores are thinking about CBD, but not medical cannabis.
Because they choose not to, but if I'm hearing you correctly, is if you apply for medical, you can have 20 people in town apply for medical, because there's no cap on the amount of licenses.
It would still have to go through the planning board?
No, no, by all means. No, no, absolutely, in fact, I don't...
Do you have the zoning of locations, because they're only allowing industrial, just not...
Yes.
So, Mr. Chair, but even, even that being said, and along, along with what the planning board members have said, I'd like to see if we can get clarification on that.
Because there, there are two, two petitions, one to increase the number of retail establishments and a second one to affect the zoning.
I think then we can give you a much clearer answer for you and everybody else.
Okay, and I always thought that the process starts with the, the State Cannabis Commission. That's where you need to start.
Yes.
You do, okay. So when VGG and Fourscore, when they started, they started as retail? That was their application?
I don't believe so, but they're sitting right behind you. Perhaps Fourscore can answer that.
I don't believe they've applied for a medical or recreational yet. I think the conversation that just happened was because they don't want to go down one path and then have to change the path, so they'd rather just go down, you know, one path and get it all done at one time as opposed to doing multiple.
Well, I, I know when I went on the portable, portable, excuse me, portal, it was March 26th. I'm recorded there as applying for marijuana retail. So, I mean, does it, I, I guess, does that matter to anybody?
I can't answer that question, because, and I will tell you why. That, because the rules at the state level have changed numerous times.
Yeah.
And part of the thing that happened with, with the, with the medical marijuana use was the Department of Public Health used to be in charge of those licensing, that licensing and stuff. And now it has gone to the Cannabis Control Commission, and some things have changed there. So, you know, I'd be remiss if I said I knew all the rules and regulations of this.
And again, thank you for bearing with me here, but this is, this is, as we all are experiencing a new process. But from what I've read is you start at, at the state, you go and, and, and visit, and end up getting your, your hometown agreement, your host agreement.
Right.
Then you go to the planning board, then you take that package and bring it back to the state. And they're the ones who will bless it and say, fine, now you can go into business. So with that process, you know, because what's happening here is, is, is who's on first? That, that's, that's, that's where we are, and what's on second, and the thing is, what we're, because when, when presentations were made back in March at, at the planning board, Fourscore had no intent of doing retail. They, they, they had stated that, and then, then it changed the following month, which is fine, you can change your mind. All I'm saying is, is, is out of fairness, there needs to be some protocol of, of who put the stake in the ground and whose stake is first.
So if, if I were, if, if it was me, Rob, I would say that the people who have negotiated a host-community agreement with the town already are probably at the front of the line, okay? And in some of those host-community agreements, there is language, which David alluded to, that we have to talk to town council about as to, as, you know, as to what, what is in, in, in there, okay?
Right.
So I think that that's, that's one portion. The other portion is what has taken place on, with, what is on the ballot is also going to have a bearing on this. So right now, you know, it's, it's, it's good that Dan and, and his group have come forward with, with their, with their proposal and, and communicated to us with a, a, a date-stamped letter that, you know, what they're, what they're, what they want to do, and you, you've started the ball rolling, okay? Where we go from here, we have to, we have to find out.
Mr. Chair, I would also add, and I would do the same for anybody, but Fourscore has, even prior to that, from the very beginning, when they've come before this board, they have verbally expressed their desire to have retail from day one. So that didn't just come later. That's not entirely accurate. They've, from day one, specified that they want retail, but if necessary, they would be happy with grow only if that's how the town wound up.
And, and Dave, I can truly appreciate that. I can truly appreciate it. But the thing is, is this is, this is a, a process that not only comes to the Board of Select with the host agreement, but again, it's going to go to the planning board to determine what they're going to do and where they're going to do is, is, is safe for the community. And all of it, to where originally should have originally started, it's going to go back to the state to see if, in fact, they agree with everything that happened. And again, I, you know, people can change their mind, okay? But the question becomes is, is if you're going to change your mind, how many times can you change your mind? So, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Do you have any questions?
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
If you were to locate in Charlton, would you open primary hiring to Charlton residents?
We would look into that.
Okay.
Thank you. Excellent. Thanks, gentlemen. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I make a comment?
Sure.
It's just a general, like, point of clarification. Mr. Lemansky had brought up the box stores like CVS, Walmart, et cetera. One of the reasons that they cannot sell marijuana is, it's because of the state. I had looked into this a long time ago when we first started discussing this as a town, and I believe the state would have to reclassify cannabis. And because four other, four other states have done so, and then they were allowed, they reclassified it, and they were allowed to sell it at a CVS and Walmart or whatever. And I actually got up at town meeting and said, I wish that was the way our state would go, because it would have solved a lot of the issues, because it's, you know, it's handed out by a pharmacist, it's at a CVS with a lot of other, or Walmart, fill in the big box store. And the other thing I wanted to mention, I had gone to the MMA conference, as you know, last time, and we had some breakout sessions, and we were talking about the town's responsibility when it comes to picking or selecting who they want in your town. And what they actually recommended was that, you know, it's not about, and I'm not, you know, this is, it's not about who got there first. It's about, because like in the bigger cities, Boston, they have so many. You can sit down, look at, you know, have an application process for six or eight months to a year, fill in a blank, and then go through all the applications and figure out what's the best fit for your town, so you can pick and choose what's the right fit. So I just wanted to highlight those facts, that's all.
Excellent, thank you.
That's very understandable, is rather than, rather than just say your first, your second, is, is where is the safest location, where is the location that's going to service the town needs, needs best, so. But again, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. So, next item, Spartan Race Special Liquor License and Traffic Control. Special alcoholic beverage license request. Attached is a request for a special alcoholic beverage license for wine and malt beverages from Spartan Race slash Peter Murphy to be used for an athletic race on May 11th and 12th, 2019, from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM at 508 International, 219 Brookfield Road, Charlton, Mass. The number of persons expected to attend is 5,500 on Saturday and 2,000 on Sunday. The police department, fire department, and building commissioner have all approved the request with the following stipulations. Fire, two means of egress out of the beer garden. Building, lighting from 7:00 PM to closing. Police, three officers for traffic on Brookfield Road for the duration of, of event Saturday. Two officers on the grounds for the duration of the event both days. One officer present inside fenced-in area serving alcohol both days, and two officers for traffic on Brookfield Road on Sunday for the duration of the event. Per the board's policy, the license, if approved, should be issued for two additional days, which is to allow the delivery the day before the event and for the pickup the day after the event with no sales allowed. The day, the dates of the license should be May 10th through May 13th, 2019. So we'll take that one up first, I guess. Is there a motion, or is there the special liquor license?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, my questions are simply, and I apologize if I missed them, but I'm assuming police, fire, they've approved, fire requests are here, police requests are here. Kurt, all the policies that we've discussed, everything is...
So what you have is actually two concurrent events with two different requirements. You have a special liquor license, which requires the very formal hearing, which the chairman has indicated he wants to deal with first. And then you have a very similar application that's a little broader in scope as for what the grounds are going to be used as and parking immediately adjacent off-site as the traffic and crowd management portion. So both, as the chairman has indicated, all the departments that are involved in recommending things to you have looked at both applications and recommend them with certain conditions on each one.
Okay, let me sure, because we don't want to approve a liquor license if we haven't yet approved the traffic and crowd.
We're doing a liquor license first. That's my preference, so.
All right, so just making sure, because they got to go hand in hand, so, okay. So, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Singer.
I would move to approve the special alcoholic beverage license request for wine and malt beverages from Spartan Race, Peter Murphy, for a race day, May 11th and 12th, 2019, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM at 508 International, Charlton, Mass. With the stipulations, A, with the stipulations below from police, fire, anything from Kurt Meskis. The date and license should be May 10th to May 13th, and the only condition I put on this is, obviously, assuming the other permit gets approved, which it likely will.
Second.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
I have a request, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Saffold.
Uh, just a, an update after the, after the event.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the next is traffic and crowd management permit, which we just had off the press from one of our last meetings. Attached is a request for a traffic and crowd management permit from Jeffrey Connor on behalf of Spartan Race Inc. for a three-mile obstacle course race to be held on May 11th and 12th, 2019, from 6:30 AM to 9:30 PM Saturday and 6:30 AM to 7:30 PM Sunday at 508 International, 219 Brookfield Road, Charlton, Mass. The number of persons expected to attend is 5,500 Saturday and 2,000 on Sunday. The police department, fire department, and building commissioner have all approved the request with the following stipulations. Fire has none. Building has tenting, cannabis needs, needs, but, uh, building permit. He also notes the possible packing and stirrage. And police say detail officer is required as per liquor license application. Six officers on Saturday and four officers on Sunday.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Saffold.
I move that we approve the request as stipulated and pending building permit.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion, Mr. Singer?
So neither chief is here, so I guess I really can't ask if it's about six officers versus 5,500 people. You know, that...
So I will, I will tell you this, that I was in the town hall when they had their pre-event meeting, and everybody was sitting in here, the chief, the sergeant Dowd was here, I believe, the fire chief was here. Lieutenant Dowd, I'm sorry.
How soon, how quickly they forget when they get old.
Yeah, whatever. What can I say? My memory's not what it used to be. And Mr. Meskis and, and people from 508, and there were people from Spartan Race here, and one of my questions to both chiefs were, is everybody in agreement with what needs to, what they need to take place? And they said yes.
So then my second half of my question was, it says possible parking and stirrage, but what does that mean? Are they going to use stirrage parking?
So I put that note down because unfortunately, when stuff was reproduced for you folks, it turns into black blobs.
Yeah.
But we have discussed, and Lauren here, right, did I do that right?
Hello, everybody. Yes, Lauren.
Indicated early on that there might be parking there. Now, we have no jurisdiction over stirrage.
Right.
But I want to make you aware, and they have been made aware, as far as I know from the police chief, that if they were to use that, that they should consult with stirrage for any requirements. And if I'm saying anything that's incorrect, Lauren, or you have some additional information you want to give the board?
Yeah, sure thing. So I have spoken with the town of Stirbridge. We will use that lot as an overflow lot, assuming that the lot adjacent to the property would fill up. And we have detail officers from Stirbridge on that lot, and that's in agreeance there, so Stirbridge is on board.
Excellent. Anything further, especially Miss Morgan?
Have you had any pre-sale tickets for this?
Yes, ma'am, we have.
How many?
I want to say about 5,000 for Saturday and about 1,600 for Sunday.
And do you have a limit on how many tickets you sell for these events?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so what's the limit?
Limit would be 9,000 on Saturday. I do not see that number getting anywhere near that. We have projected racer numbers. This event is at 5,500 for Saturday, and projected on Sunday would be 2,000.
If your ticket sales go over that, will you let the, the...
Yes, ma'am.
Fire now?
Yes.
Thank you.
Certainly.
So that, just one of, one of the things that came up was, that was the baseline that the police and the fire chief gave them, and they were given the same information that if ticket sales went up, then they would have to revisit their details.
Does the public get the comment on any of this?
I guess.
So let me just say a few things, because people are going to want to know what's going on. There's a bunch of stuff in the package that you folks got, okay, which includes signage before the event at the, down by the mill and at Route 49. They delivered maps and a whole layout of the race course, which is fully with on the 508 property, and that is a permitted activity. They provided all the information on their tenting, their bathrooms, and first they have, you know, worked with the fire department for first aid and EMTs on scene. All these other things have been happening in the background and have been satisfied to those departments. They also tell me in both this Spartan event and shortly coming in June will be the Tough Mudder event. These are staggered times, right, you guys?
Yes.
So they're staggered, so it does, it doesn't mean that all 5,000 people come for 6 o'clock in the morning. There are, there are heats, so traffic will be split up somewhat, but I can't, you know, predict when people are going to come or not. And the police chief seems, you know, in the discussions that Mr. McGrath talks about and we talk about in staff meetings, all these questions have been, you know, brought up and discussed, and everybody's aware of the history and, and the pitfalls of this kind of event at that venue. And everybody's aware of the history and the pitfalls of this kind of event at that venue. And we're all trying very hard to work with the venue owner and the event staff to lessen the impact like this is in allowed activity on that site.
So, and Kurt, if you can just yield the seat, the gentleman has a question.
I would say make sure it's respectful, on topic and...
Yeah, absolutely. Hi, could you just identify yourself, sir?
I'm Warren Cisco from Charlton, Mass. 38 North Sullivan Road, I'm a butter to this property. My property line of butts for about a mile of the property. We've had events there before and I've had problems with the trash all blowing over onto my property. Has anything been, be, gonna be done to, for those concerns?
We'll address that with the venue.
Okay. Also, they trespassed on my property during the event, these running events and, and desecrated on my property. And I took pictures of it and I did go to the planning board prior. I went to the Board of Health and nobody seems to care that these people are trespassing and pissing and shitting all over my property when they're running. Nobody's going back to them outhouses when they're in the middle of these events.
So we will caution the venue operator and the licensees to take, make sure that they take special pains to make sure the people, A, stay on their own on 508's property, that the litter issue is taken care of and we'll address it that way.
Okay, last year they put up barbed wire fence to control the people after the event so that they wouldn't cross over, but only for a small portion of the boundary line.
Okay.
Is the town still okay with using barbed wire fence to contain people?
I'm not, that's not my decision. I can't answer anything about that.
Well, it's there. Who decides whether that's good or bad?
I have no, if I had an answer, I'd give it to you.
Is that what you want? Separating the people along my boundary line is barbed wire fence?
So, so Mr. Cisco, what we'll do is we'll address it with the venue, with the venue owner. We're addressing it with the people that are trying to license it. And we will, we will ask for an after-action report after it's done, okay? I remember you came forward last year with some complaints after the last, after the Tough Mudder event. And I believe that the venue owners are well aware of that and it's up to them to make sure it doesn't happen. Mr. Singer.
And if it does happen, then what's, what happens then? I mean, I'm gonna be up there with cameras again and taking more pictures.
Well, we will, we will, if it happens again, we will, we will take action. Mr. Singer.
If possible, it would be nice if we could ask, and there's no obligation upon 508 to do so. But if they could, you know, try to preemptively figure out ways of notifying participants, you know, maybe with additional signage, notifying them that trespassers will be arrested because police will be called. If, all those steps, if you could just proactively take those steps to try and alleviate the concern so he doesn't have to come back here with pictures of people doing things on his property or even damaging or throwing their garbage on his property would be appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Cisco. Yep. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, we have a motion and a second.
Yeah, we do.
Yes. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Unanimous. Okay, next.
Thank you.
Good luck at your event.
Next, traffic and crowd management permit for the Family Fish Event. Attached is a request for a traffic and crowd management permit from the Charlton Conservation Commission/Fay Mountain Farm to hold the Family Fish Event on May 4th, 2019, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. At Fay Mountain Farm, 12 Cemetery Road, Charlton, Mass. The Police Department, Fire Department, and Building Commissioner have all approved the request with no stipulations. It is recommended that the board approve the request.
Oh, look at that. Mr. Chair, I move to approve the request.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, new business, legal fees. Karen?
First, thank you for putting this on the agenda. I would also like to thank Ashley and Donna for getting me the information requested. And I, I'm gonna be very brief. I, I just wanted to start more of a high-level conversation about legal fees and the model that we use right now. As you know, we kind of, we use a pay-by-as-you-go.
Pays-as-you-play.
Pays-as-you-play versus putting an attorney on, on retainer. And as I mentioned, when I had gone to the Mass Municipal Association Annual Meeting, I got to speak with a lot of peers, you know, other select board members. And they really were very happy using the retainer model because with that comes more accessibility, more transparency. The, I believe some even had them come in, you know, you have to write it into the contract, of course, but would come into the town hall one day a month or one day every couple of weeks and be available to answer questions for the, for the folks at the town hall, which they seemed very happy with. So again, I know part of our goals and objectives, you know, that comes up in a few months or whatever, but if we could just put that on, on the radar, radar and examine, you know, what we're spending now, the pros and cons of, of both models.
Yes.
Again, just to start the conversation.
And we, I believe, we've had that conversation, you know, over the time with goals and objectives. When is it, you know, when is, when does it weigh that you hire what they call a solicitor? You know, when does the town want to hire a solicitor to take care of the purchasing and the legal end of it? Some towns use that model also, but it is a good subject for our goals and objectives and thank you for bringing it up. Mr. Singer.
Can we put this on the town website?
Sure.
So the taxpayers can see where we're spending our, our legal money?
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Absolutely.
Should we put it on the selectmen's page?
It'll be, Mary's cautioning, cautioning us that it'll be in a week when the web, when the webmaster is back on duty. Thank you, Mary.
I think it'll be good because it'll also show them the frequency with which we actually use legal services.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
To the chair, do you think it should go on the selectmen's page or on the, hmm, accountant's page?
Probably accountant.
That's a good question.
I think the accountant's page.
Put it in the accountant's page.
Incom page?
Talk to, uh...
No?
Talk with Donna, maybe, about where she would like to post it.
Yeah.
Okay, that's her field work.
Okay.
That'd be my guess unless somebody has something else. Okay. All right. Next item, Planning Board Council Subdivision Site Plan.
To you, Don.
Yeah. Mr. Singer's recusing himself. Good evening. What's up?
First thing is, I would like to ask the Board of Selectmen to appoint Mr. David McKay of Merck O'Connell as a special municipal employee.
So, I, I just have a comment, Jim. I mean, I, you and I had this conversation and Mr. Cosgrove had some reservations about that and I'll explain his reservations to the rest of the board so that they know. Currently, the, Mr. McKay is representing Southbridge in a mediation with the Town of Charlton on the saw and water retained earnings. It's not, it's not a court issue right now.
Correct.
But if the mediation fails, it could go to court. And that was Jim's cautionary note. You know, he had nothing but good things to say about Mr. McKay. The other, the other item that he brought up was that, that Mr. McKay would still have to go seek the town manager and Southbridge, Southbridge's approval.
He's doing that.
Okay.
He's doing that.
So with that, that's what I know, so it's up to the board to...
To the chair.
Mr. Noble.
Was, was Attorney McKay recommended by Attorney Cosgrove? No. Okay, did he...
He was recommended by somebody.
Who was he recommended by, I'm just curious?
It was just a random search from your department.
Okay, okay.
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 Was, was Attorney Cosgrove able to give you any recommendations? I didn't even ask.
He did. I contacted two of them.
Mm-hmm.
One flatly said, no, they didn't want to do it.
Okay.
And the other firm didn't get back to me after repeated calls.
Oh, I'm sorry about that.
Um, and there was another attorney I contacted who was given to us by another attorney and that person also did not return the calls.
Mr. Safrovich.
So I've been through like five different attorneys.
I understand. I just wanted the people to know that you absolutely did your due diligence, which I'm sure you did.
Yep.
But now the public knows too.
Mr. Safrovich.
If a conflict does come up, I imagine there's ways to, around that, ways to, when you do that, where you just define new counsel.
Okay.
Yes, I assume.
It's a fairly large firm, yes?
Yes.
Very well reputable.
Yes, oh, yes. So if, if there was a conflict, perhaps they could have another attorney step in?
That's a possibility also.
Okay.
Okay.
And he would have to come on as a special employee, is my understanding?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm, I'm comfortable with moving forward with appointing this, you know, having you go with this particular firm. And I believe, yeah, it was, it's the same thing we had to do for Attorney Babowski.
Yeah.
The special municipal employee designation.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
When, when would that happen? Is that something we can...
Soon, you can go down it tonight.
Well, first, we have to, we have to hire him, so let's hire him. And then have him make sure that Southbridge says, okay. And then we'll move forward at our next, at our next meeting to make him a special town employee.
I thought you needed a special employee first. I thought he had to be designated as special municipal employee first.
I don't believe so, not until you hire him. So you have to hire him? He has to get approved?
If my memory of special employees serve correctly, you make the position a special employee, not the person.
Okay.
So I would, and I'm sure we can fix it later date, but I would make a motion that we, what, what was her name?
David McKay.
David McKay.
I would authorize David McKay to designate. And designate that position as special municipal employee and Mr. Attorney McKay as special legal counsel, authorize that.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, any discussion?
I would just ask that we amend the motion to say pending confirmation from Southbridge town manager. That's the only thing.
I amend my motion.
Thank you.
And the second, okay. So we have a motion and a second amended, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Now, do you have a standard contract that you have? An agreement? Or do you want...
Not really.
Do you want Attorney McKay to present one to you?
I, I would recommend just Attorney McKay reaching out to Ms. Kramer.
Yeah, yeah, well, the office, just have him reach out to the Board of Selectmen's office. Mary.
I'm sure he has a, a standard retainer agreement with his building rights and all that.
Right. I just wasn't sure, I couldn't tell him the right way to do it because I...
He's been hired, so he'll...
Okay.
He'll, he'll, they usually know how to...
Yeah, they know.
That's the best thing that they know how to do.
Yes, they know how to build for sure.
Okay.
I want to ask about... Do, the, the other thing was the, well, I don't know if it falls under this or the next item, about the attorney for Mrs. Ridak?
So, so we are waiting to see if, whether you assign, give me an attorney for the defamation stuff is kind of the, the answer I need to be able to figure out what, the route that I need to take. So is that something that will be discussed?
Number two?
I'd say that's probably number two. Okay? So the next, the next item is...
We're trying to keep you on time.
That's okay. Investigate, investigation of the planning board matter.
We don't really have a memo about that.
There is no memo.
There is no memo, okay.
So I saw that we, we, there was a new memo and I know that...
We, we just received it, so, so Mary was out last week and we had, we had a memo that was sent to us on April 12th, 2019, which she opened on Monday.
So, do you, do you have a copy of that? Oh, yes.
Oh, okay, I have one of them.
So, I mean, I don't know if you had a chance to read that completely, but in their March 28th letter, they said, talked about the alarming event and did their whole accusation. And it clearly says, I committed a crime, it referenced the crime. And then in the new letter, just, I'll quote, "We have not made and do not now make any accusations or claims that Ms. Ridak, in fact, violating any laws." So...
Just excuse, excuse me for interrupting. I'm at a loss, what am I missing?
There's attached to your...
The letter.
Attached to one of your things is...
Is it in here?
Yeah.
Oh.
It was in, it was in the email.
Okay, so it was emailed, I'm sorry. I have a hard copy here.
Like, like, four days' long or something?
Because I was going through all my emails prior to head shop after I got it.
So the email came in later this afternoon? Okay, that explains why I didn't...
Okay, and I'm sorry, I thought everybody had a hard copy attached to it, so...
I'm literally on the same page now.
I was hoping that you guys could actually clarify for me because I don't, it's just, same attorney signed it and in one statement it says, accuses me, and then it says, we have never accused or I don't... Maybe your little expertise could tell me where I should go from, I'm kind of...
So, there's, there's a couple of things, okay, that I, that, that I have found out. So, there's a, if it was something to do with the plan, this is just going to, for legal counsel, okay? If it was something to do with, with the subdivision site plan, okay? You would be covered by the attorneys that we have, whether it's Cosgrove or Babowski or...
MMA.
And, yeah, well, so that would be one thing. If it was a, if it was a, a claim on, on the other side, which is the, you know, that you had done wrong, you know, like somebody's civil rights or something like that. It would, you know, which they do, when you, when you don't approve something, they do say, claim that their civil right to due process was, was impinged. And that, that would go to the...
Mia.
Mia, which is our municipal insurance agency, and they would supply an attorney. According to Attorney Cosgrove, the, because nobody has, nobody has filed any suit against you, you know, in, in that, in that manner, and there is no legal, nothing legal going on personally against you, that if you, if you want to go after somebody for defaming your character or any of those type things, you have to hire your own counsel for that because there is no legal, legal action that's been taken against you as a town, as a town employee, okay? And that was Jim's explanation that, you know, verbally to me.
So if somebody accuses, so in my, in my elected capacity, I was, I was accused of this. And it's all over legal documents, it's, so you're, so any town employee who this may happen to, they, they're always, they're on their own, it seems like quite a risk to be running for...
So because there has been no action taken, so there has been no court case filed, is the way Jim put it, then nothing kicks in. If there's a court case filed, then things kick in. So if somebody said, if somebody said, if somebody filed suit against you in court saying that Ms. Ridak said this and did this, okay? Then my, my guess is Mia would pick up on that, okay, our insurance agency. But because nobody has made a formal complaint in court against you, then there is, there is nothing that the town does legally, okay? If you, if you feel that you personally have been defamed, then you, you have to go the route of, you take them personally to court saying, you defamed me, you know, you, you, you sullied my reputation or whatever.
So if I accused somebody of making an anonymous... So if I accused somebody of, um, making an anonymous complaint, um, and it being in, because I think they did, uh, a, an elected official, and I, could I start spreading that in social media and, and whatever I, whatever I want to do, and that person wouldn't get a, an attorney assigned? They'd have to hire their own attorney to, to defamation?
Correct, because that would be, and I'll, I'll...
Do we get attorneys for that?
But that's, but, no, no, but that, that's the way I was explaining, so...
Or if I accuse somebody of modifying emails in the building or something like that,
Right.
then I, then that's, then I just want to know in the future what I can do to people, so it, you know, on social media.
But I think, I think that, Patsy, I think if you have questions about this, the best one to, to call is to call Jim, okay, and, and talk to him. He'll explain, you know, he'll explain to you what, what he explained to me.
Through, through the chair?
So I have permission to, I have permission to reach out to Jim?
Yes.
Through the, through the, through the chair, and what just happened should have happened a long time ago. This is not necessarily about giving someone an attorney. It's about providing immediate access to our public officials who are accused, in this case, of a, of a felony. It's about the access to provide guidance to prevent things like, from like this hap- from happening in the first place. And that's what's very frustrating.
So...
And, and, go ahead, Joe.
I was gonna ask, I, I thought the, the policy we have in place is if any official has any issues, they reach out to the Suckman's office, and we direct them, we say, this is what you're facing, then we refer them to counsel.
You, you are correct, but the, what was missed is you have to go through the chair of town administrator, and that was not granted in this case. That's my frustration.
And, and there were two questions when this came up the other day, I mean, the la- at the last meeting, and there was some confusion as to what would be covered and what wasn't. And that's when I reached out to attorney Cosgrove to ask him what to do, so...
Okay, so no, so I don't get an attorney, so next question is...
But wait, wait, sweetie, I'm sorry, excuse me for interrupting. We are allowing, Patsy, to, or the chairman, the planning board, to access counsel to provide guidance if she has questions, yes?
Absolutely.
What about to send, um, uh, the letters saying you defamed, um, the chair of our board?
So I think that, I think that is a question for attorney Cosgrove to ask him, okay? That's, that's what he's there for.
So we did vote on, there was a vote on a, uh, on an investigation to figure out how a, a, a comment went from being a legal document in court. And we, so is there any, was any investigation conducted yet to figure out who, um, took this information and then ended up feeding it to the VGG attorneys who ended up putting it on all these documents in front of me? The, that, it was voted on to do that, if I'm correct?
Yeah.
Has anything been done to determine how?
That's, it's on the agenda now. We sort of jumped a little bit.
That's what we're talking about, okay.
Are we, are we technically on that now?
Yeah. It's, uh, it's all interrelated.
So, through the chair, I'd like to start the conversation or continue it. So we, we did vote to do that, two, four, one against. Um, I think we could save a lot of time, and this town possibly a decent amount of money, if just some, just got some answers to questions regarding, to, to your point, Patsy, how did this happen?
Mm-hmm.
And I'm, I'm going to, this is my opinion or interpretation from comments that were made at our last meeting. It would appear that it may have been attorney Silverstein, because he's, what did you call him? Sluck Manobel? He's required to report things? I don't know, again, I'm not legal, um...
So I can't, I can't, you know...
But, but if we found, but, but if we've, if, it's important, because if he's a mandated reporter, um, I think they have to go through the courts, right, and then they, they send it out to all the, the attorneys? I don't know. So my, my, I guess my question is, who instructed him, if it was him, to do that? Or did he take it upon himself to do it? So that's one question. And if, again, if anyone else had encouraged him to do so, that would be very important. Because it's important, we, so we don't ever, so history doesn't repeat itself. We learn how it happens so it doesn't happen again. And that being said, I, I just have to, um, voice my concerns and my frustrations yet again, and it doesn't please me to do so. But, Mr. Chairman, I have requested information from our last meeting, you know, legal updates, correspondence, so I could get a better handle on what's going on.
Mm-hmm.
I still feel like I am not privy to the information that maybe you and, and others are. And, and it's impeding my ability to be, do, do my job as a select person, so... I'm, again, I'm embarrassed to say, I made that request, you know I made that request, and I didn't even, you didn't even extend me the courtesy of, I'm not even gonna give you the answer. You, no one answered me.
So first of all, when you had, when you...
Do I have to make a public records request? That's pretty embarrassing.
No, when you asked, when you asked me about that, I didn't have an update. And I just got the update from Jim this morning on what to do. We, and on the McKay issue, I didn't know if they, the planning board was gonna bring David McKay up or not. They were looking at other lawyers at the time. That was my last conversation with Jim.
Yes.
Okay. So you are as up to date as anybody on this board is, and probably a few hours later than the chair.
So this, this is the only communication that's gone back and forth? Because I may, you know my request.
Yes, it is, so...
So if it's determined that Jonathan Silverstein acted on his own, and he decided that he was going to go to VGG and say, this is what the planning board chair said, um, um, actually, the planning board chair committed a crime, and without any instruction from Charlton, um, I would ask that he would be dismissed as an attorney, because that's a hu- that's integrity, that's, that's, um, that's malice.
So fir- so first, so first of all, Patsy, what we'll do is, we will determine what happened, and that's for the board to figure out how we're gonna determine that.
I thought that's what this was all about.
But, but just, just if I, again, through, through the chair, respectfully, of course.
Mm-hmm.
Do we know what happened? Did, was it Jonathan who, who sent?
You don't know.
So nothing's been done in two weeks? Did anyone, did any, did any of us sitting around the table...
Did you con...
Encourage, encourage Jonathan or took it upon themselves to do it? I mean, this is just the basic things that can save the time and money.
So I think the first thing is to have maybe Mary reach out or myself to attorney Silverstein and ask him for a statement.
Can he actually come here in person?
I actually asked him...
Attorneys tend to be really, um, interesting with their statements.
Yeah, he's been, he's been, he's been busy, so...
I, I asked a question, though. Did anyone around this table encourage or, or encourage Jonathan or anyone to took the information and, and brought? What really is twisted or really bothers me is the fact if this, and how this information got to the entity who's, like, suing us, actually, multiple lawsuits. That's...
Since I didn't do it, I'm, you know, I can't, you know, I can't answer for anybody else, but I'm telling you, I do.
You can't answer? Yes, no?
It's an interesting question.
It's, be truthful. It's like, this is what it's all about. I mean, again, time and money, we can...
It's my understanding, through the chair, it's my understanding that there were public posts on social media. Is that, if that's correct, yes?
There was, there was a comment four days, five days after about, and I actually have that comment, um...
If, if I had to guess, I would say they were probably monitoring social media. And, um...
Silverstein is...
So, his, 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 his...
Somebody was and showed up.
Here's my statement. His, his...
Can I ask one more question?
Here's what I'm gonna say. This is all speculation right now, okay? I think the best thing is to get a statement from attorney Silverstein on what his, what he, how he was involved in that, whether he comes and makes a statement here or he sends us a written statement, and we will go from, forward from there.
So are we gonna, are we gonna do a formal investig- are we gonna get somebody in here to do a formal investigation? Go through the email system and look at the correspondence?
Probably not.
So, pretty...
That would be my guess.
So pretty much you're saying, um, uh, it's okay that applicants come in here and defame elected officials,
So I think this is the first step, and I, I think it's not fair to say what we're gonna do next, I think. The next step is to...
But you've had two weeks.
Mr. Chair?
But, but two weeks went by and nothing was done at all.
Nothing happened at all. Right. We were here two weeks ago and pleaded for Patsy to be allowed an attorney.
Mm-hmm.
Nothing happened. You didn't even tell us at that time, contact Jim. You didn't give her permission to contact Jim directly on that.
No, because I talked, I talked with Jim first. There was the, because of your...
Which was today.
So...
I'm just saying, we sat here for two weeks and nothing happened. Talked about two weeks. Did you get an answer back from your, um, telecommunicator?
It's a work in progress.
So...
Okay.
So, excuse me, we're off topic.
No, we're not.
This is part of the...
This is part of the investigation.
No, no, the, the...
Ms. Noble is one who said that was, she started with the investigation herself, so we were just, you know...
Through, through, through the chair, and again, I keep interrupting you. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm for so many things, Patsy, really. Here's what I would like, matter of fact, you could call it a demand. I would like, in writing, from Jonathan, what happened, and whatever he sent, I want to see the actual document that he sent, where he sent it, to whom he sent it. And I would also ask, because I believe lawyers cannot tell fibs, you know, if anyone from our office or our, name, our, any of us had anything to do with giving him permission, because my understanding is, I know we didn't take any kind of vote publicly to encourage him to do, take such action. So I want to know, in writing, again, before, as soon as possible, and, what, what happened? The other, so, okay.
Can we get that, can we get that not within two weeks? Can we possibly get that within the next couple of days? It's important for, um, me to know.
Mary?
Um, I'll do my best, okay? Two weeks, I was off last week, so a lot of stuff, we can get done.
We could, well, we, again, Mary's been doing a great job, thank you, Mary. But we are here, and I always said, I, I'm more than willing to help. If we want someone to reach out to Jonathan, so, or as long as we have approval from the board, because we shouldn't go rogue.
Right.
That's, that's really very important, so we can help. We're here, we're here to help to expedite the matters. And I would also like to know from attorney Silverstein, he was supposed to be at the last meeting. It, it started, he was gonna be here at seven fifteen, and then all of a sudden, it was, he can't make it till the executive session, and then he did not, he couldn't attend at all, and I just, was running...
He ended up with the Westford Board of Selectmen longer than he thought he was gonna be.
And I did request him to be here tonight.
He's tied up again tonight.
Did you ask him?
I did.
And he, and you said that?
Thank you for asking.
All right, so what do we have to do now?
So, so can you tell me the further, can you tell me the next steps, so if it happened?
Well, I think what Karen asked...
Yeah, I would ask, either today or tomorrow, send an email to attorney Silverstein, request it, as soon as possible.
Yeah.
And, and there is one other thing through, through the chair.
Mm-hmm.
I was hoping, again, I know we went back and forth with having the IT person here, because, you know, me and technology, but I wanted to ask some questions about the email system. And maybe, I think one of you should know, if not all of you. My understanding was, many years ago, this town invested in a very expensive software that archives all email?
Oh, I believe so.
So, okay, if, if that's the case, may I suggest, maybe we want to see if there are any emails over the last... Help me with the timeframe, month? Right, because it, we do have that, so you're confirming we do have that?
I'm pretty positive.
All right, and then they, maybe they can run a, a query?
I'm, I believe it's a requirement of the secretary of state that you have to have...
Communications that gone back and forth to attorney Silverstein?
Since March fourteenth, for, I think it's March fourteenth, I think, was the date.
Attorney Silverstein and anyone from our office or any of, um, us, but honestly.
I will...
Or anything that has a, would be G G.
Okay. Mary?
I will ask him, uh, what I had asked you earlier, is if you could send me the questions you had. He'd have to do the research, because I don't know how much he knows. Like, I know he knows a lot about the system, because he's fairly new.
Right.
But he'd have to talk with, like, Ken and all that, see what we need to do. So if you could give me an email, exactly what the questions you're looking for, for him to do. Because I don't know if they can just go in and do a search. I don't know if we have to request something. So I'm gonna have to look into that, because it's not, anything anybody's ever done is just to go through and start digging through emails. It doesn't, there's a process for it, so I have to figure it out.
And that, actually, that was gonna be one of the questions, was, was, with the process.
And that's what we needed ahead of time, so that we could give you the answers.
I did, I did have a quick conversation with him offline, so he kinda knew, it was kind of informal, but... Because, and, and I know a lot of people don't know about, we have Ken, and maybe, what's Ken's consulting firm or whatever? So we have Jeff, who's the IT person we hired not that long ago, and then...
I just get a line, but, no, I can't think of who it was.
Ken, Ken Han.
Han.
Who does the more, um, high level?
I didn't think he was still...
I believe he does the more, the more high level searches or whatever.
I didn't think he was doing it anymore since we have our own IT. No, he's still here, and we have the IT to help us with this guy.
He's still on the contract.
So big.
Okay.
So...
Okay.
Can...
Mike, go ahead.
All right.
So with the board, I think we need to make the motion or...
Mm-hmm. Joe.
Make it a little cohesive.
So, I, Joe was talking before, so...
Yep, Joe, I'm sorry, Joe.
You're all set.
That was, all I was saying was that why don't we email tomorrow? Make the requests for the statement from attorney Silverstein. I think that's reasonable.
If, yeah, especially if he gives us all the information and... And the other thing about, um, having questions prepared ahead of time, that is so... Sometimes you have a question for somebody, and you have another question based on their answer, so I... Preparing questions ahead of time doesn't make any sense to me.
No, no, this was on our agenda items. It was this...
No, this was...
This was Mary. We had a technology...
Yes.
So we had a technology town email system that Karen asked for us to put on to...
Right. But he, she, he also wanted the questions presen- or Marion wanted the questions presented prior to the meeting, and that's not realistic.
Go ahead.
It is realistic if he has an idea of what he needs to answer, and then any other questions you can ask him absolutely that aren't on the list.
Okay.
But anybody that comes in front of the board gives us a brief synopsis of what it is they're looking for, so we can either do the research or they can provide you with some at a court.
This, this is for an agenda item that Karen had asked to have on the agenda.
Correct. Correct.
So what Mary was saying to Karen is, if you can tell us in advance what your questions are, we can have him prepared to at least answer those questions, and then afterwards, we'll pick at the, you know, whatever comes up afterwards, so...
And I go, I go back to, through the chair, to Sluck Manobel, did you have any involvement with this?
Why are you asking me that?
Because it's part of the investigation.
Well, I guess it'll come up in the investigation then, won't it?
Well, again, it would really kinda save time.
There was, there were two, during, during that meeting, there were two people that lectured. It was Jonathan and, and Ms. Noble.
And so, all right.
They both lectured me on how bad it was to, for whatever I had done. So that's why the, the blame, the, the thought process immediately goes to the people that would've, would've shared the information. But I assume that there's, so it'll be depositions and stuff, and it will eventually get to the answer.
All right.
I am very disappointed. I, I, we, we were on boards together for years and years, and I'm pretty, I'm, I'm just amazingly disappointed that it got, that a public official, um, could be accused of something, affect work, everything else, and to not have the board of the selectmen because we didn't agree with a project that you wanted. It, it's actually very sickening, and I'm, I'm...
So, Patsy, I'm, I'm afraid that that is very, very incorrect, okay? This has nothing to do with any project or anything else. As I told you when you he- were here before, this has to do with what town council will cover, okay? Town council will cover the things that I told you about. They will not cover something if, if you feel that you've been defamed. That is something civilly that you have to take up with your own lawyer.
So we have an applicant that is, that is, is, we have a site plan, and we have a subdivision. In our subdivision appeal, it pretty much, it just, the whole, the whole appeal is just an insult to me. So is, do we now have our subdivision attorney that's able to now go after them as part of the, um, the response to our appeal?
You have to talk to that attorney.
So if that's something he can then do, then that's, then that's...
I would, I would...
Appropriate?
I would say that, that probably they cannot do it, okay?
Well, if he's answering the appeal...
Because I believe, because I, that's, has, it's, what is, what is being defended there is your actual, what you did in your actual official capacity as the, as for the planning board.
The actual appeal says that I committed a crime, though. Actually, in the appeal to the judge, it actually says that I committed a crime.
We're getting off topic. I think, Patsy, I think, I believe, I believe your best, your best recourse is to talk with Jim Cosgrove. And I will check with him, you know, I'll check in with him later. But when you call him, you can tell, tell him that you have the, the authority to, to talk with him about it and have him explain it to you.
I mean, I think Jim is a wonderful man, but he also listens, he also is under the order of you and, and.
Jim is an independent, Jim is a very independent lawyer, and he's been doing this for a long, long time. And, and you can have complete faith and trust in him. He is unbiased, he will tell you exactly what to do, whether it's anything that we agree with up here, or whether the town administrator agrees with it, or who agrees with it. He will give you the, the absolute best advice. So, that's all I can say to that. So, with that, um.
And we'll also reach out to Attorney Silverstein tomorrow?
Yes.
Asking him for a statement?
Please.
Just want us a statement from him on how it happened?
Right.
No, and who, and if anybody instructed him at all to, um, to share this information with VGG?
Is that okay?
And through, through the chair, actually, I want to see exactly what he sent and to whom he sent it. The, the doc, the original document, and I'm sure I'll see the date on it, right?
Mm-hmm.
And, and if anyone else was involved in, um, just so we're all on the same page, through the chair, so, the Planning Board Chair, Planning Board, she can ask Cosgrove questions, right? She has access to do that.
Absolutely, absolutely. She can hear the same thing, you know, that's what I want you to hear.
And, and I know, Ms. Noble, Selectman Noble, you had asked me something earlier, and it is important, your, the answer to your questions, your involvement is very important. Because, time and time again, your actions and your words have demonstrated what you are accusing others of, which is bias. An inability to kind of set things aside and you're kinda making it personal, in my opinion. So, if, if indeed you are guilty of something, I would ask you, from one professional select person to another, to recuse yourself from anything to do with VGG. You don't, you don't have to. It's just an observation and a recommendation.
Okay.
And my last thing is to Patsy, for what it's worth, I am sorry. To the Planning Board, I am sorry. I think what you're going through and, and what I hear out there from people, how, why would you wanna run for office if no one's gonna step up and defend you? It's terrible. And you made some, you made some requirements or demands?
Nobody apologized, so I didn't get, I, I asked all, I, I truly just wanted apologies.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I did get another, I mean, I guess Attorney Croft did tell another lie and said, we didn't accuse her of anything, so, um, which is quite interesting after, when I can pull the letter from one month ago saying that they did, but I guess, and I, and I thought attorneys couldn't lie, but, I mean, who am I?
And before, 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 I'm cutting you off again, I'm so sorry.
Oh, no, no.
I have to say, I, I wanna also make it very clear, any communication that we get, we, we being the, um, Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board, we are, we are on the same side. We are all defendants in the case against VGG. Anything our office receives, I am making a statement that, as a courtesy, the Planning Board should receive.
Absolutely.
All of them, the chair and through them. 'Cause that's not, and just, just so you know, that's not, has not been the case in the past.
Okay.
That's my frustration.
All right.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Read this back, John, I can print it. John? Thank you.
You got it. Okay, notice from Attorney General. Okay, notice from Attorney General regarding Robert Lemansky's request for reconsideration. At the Board's March twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen meeting, Rob Lemansky came forward during open forum to give the Board notice that the open meeting law request he had sent in, sent in some months ago, was answered back on February twenty-eighth of this year. He was seeking reconsideration from the Attorney General's office relative to the board being found in violation of the open meeting law. He stated that the original complaint he sent in, the state gave it consideration to the first party, but they, but they didn't consider the last two parts, and that's why he's asking for reconsideration. On April eleventh, twenty nineteen, we received a letter from the Attorney General's office in reference to Mr. Lemansky's complaint, and they reviewed his request and declined to reconsider or amend their determination and consider the matter closed. And this is the letter. Dear Mr. Lemansky, our office received your letter dated March eighteenth, twenty nineteen, in which you request reconsideration of our determination, letter, open meeting law, twenty nineteen, S fifteen. The determination resolved a complaint you filed with our office on November fifth, twenty eighteen, alleging the Chelten, Chelten Board of Selectmen violated the open meeting law. In our determination, we concluded that the board violated the open meeting law by convening an executive session on May eighth, twenty eighteen, for an improper purpose. Although we found the violation of the open meeting law, you urge, you urged us to reconsider our determination to find that the violation was intentional. There is no statutory right to reconsideration by the Office of the Attorney General of an open meeting law determination. Although the Division of Open Government generally will not reconsider past determinations, the Division will grant reconsideration where the request identifies a clerical or mechanical error in the determination or a significant legal or factual issue that the Division may have overlooked or misapprehended in resolving the complaint. We have reviewed your request and declined to reconsider our determination. In issuing the determination on February twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen, we had already considered whether the board had acted intentionally to violate the open meeting law and concluded that it had not. Furthermore, our office will not consider additional allegations that are not cited in the complaint filed with the public body. Finally, our office enforces the open meeting law only and cannot consider whether the board violated any other laws or rules, such as Robert Rules of Order, or the board's own rules on releasing information or materials that the board deemed confidential. Accordingly, we decline to reconsider or amend the determination and consider the matter closed. Although we consider this matter closed, we note that three or more registered voters may initiate, initiate a civil action to enforce the open meeting law in Superior Court. And that was from Carrie Benan, the Director of Division of Open Government. So, with that, and next we have the ATM warrant for posting. Attaches the annual town meeting warrant for May twentieth, twenty nineteen. You are asked to review and approve if you have no changes. If, it has been reviewed by Town Council and Department Heads, and any changes they request have been made. We need to post it, and, we need to post it with the town clerk by Thursday, April twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen. So, I believe everybody's had this for a while.
Mm-hmm.
Has there been any changes?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Safarovich.
I move that we approve the warrant for posting?
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
We have a second, do we have discussion?
Through the chair, we're still waiting for some specifics, right, on some of these articles?
Are you looking at the motions?
No.
That'll be your next.
Not the, not the motions, like specifics where we're moving. Typically, if you look at the other, the warrant from last year, for instance.
Yeah.
We have, like, a table, Excel file table inserted where we're moving things to and from, or.
That's when the motions come on.
That will be part of it?
Is that when we get closer to the finalized?
Okay.
When you have, when Finance Committee and the Finance Director work together, that's when it'll come through for your motions before it's printed.
Okay.
So you will get that then.
And I did have, and I apologize, I just saw this, like, later today.
Mm-hmm.
Um, where was it? H R, Article, bottom of page four, bottom of page four. And, and we have to talk about this? And I did do some research, where it says, so I'm on Article fourteen, Personnel Bylaw Amendment, Human Resources Department, Personnel Board. The last line, are you, are everyone on the same page?
Mm-hmm.
It says, the human resource, resources, I need to make it bigger, Director shall be a department, shall be a department head and shall report to the town administrator. I would like to insert after that, that issues arising pertaining to the town administrator shall be adjudicated by or taken to, taken to the Board of Selectmen?
Mm-hmm.
That seems to be the norm in other towns that have done this.
I think that was unspoken, but that's, it's unwritten, but it's.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's, does anybody have?
You'd never have anyone in Michigan.
Do we have to have a motion on that?
Well, I know, but it's just.
Well, the Personnel Board is sponsoring this, so I think it should've been discussed with them.
Okay.
I can ask them?
Yes, please.
If it's a problem, so.
Okay. Can you email that to me, what you just said?
Yeah, I can do that.
Excellent.
I'll make a note to them, 'cause I don't forget it.
I made a note, I made a note and I forgot.
You owe me one, then.
If they're okay with it, just go ahead and change it and post it?
Yeah.
Um, if they're not, what do you want me to do?
We can talk about it at the town, on the town floor, Katie.
You can rechange it.
Yeah, yeah.
Make it most of the time.
Yeah.
Joe?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I wonder if there's any policies in place when there's a conflict like that somewhere else that says that if there's, the person has a direct conflict, that there is recourse and ability to go, to, to handle it?
Yeah, I don't think there is. I think it's sort of the unspoken rule.
Okay.
All right, so, um, with that, we have a motion, a second, any further discussion?
Oh, so my motion would include the, include the change as requested?
And I just had, actually, a housekeeping item, because regarding the posting, when it has to go to print. I know, I know the planning, Planning Board is going to be meeting. Now, what if they meet, 'cause what if we approve this and they meet and they make changes to their articles? How does that, how does it all?
That's, that's the same as, that's the same as if there's transfer, you know, transfers, monies and that. When we read the articles, will be the actual article that will be on the, on the.
And the motion will include any changes or any specific action?
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
So, we have a motion, a second, on approving the warrant with, uh, an amendment.
The clarification?
Yep, with the clarification. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Super. Marijuana Advisory Committee update.
Yeah, I don't know.
Before you start that, regarding the town, um, the warrant and everything, what about the budget? Has the budget been finalized or anything?
It's not gonna be finalized until town meeting floor.
Yeah.
Well, there's always changes until the end.
FinCom's meeting tomorrow night, too, right?
'Cause the, the only draft is from February twenty-fifth?
I think they're still working with Congress here.
And, Joe, we got, we have two FinCom members present. Will you please confirm you are meeting tomorrow night and discussing the budget? Through the chair.
Say yes.
With a thumbs up. From two.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, moving on, Marijuana Advisory.
Yeah, um, we don't have any draft minutes yet for me to share, so I'm hesitant to, to give you guys an update. The only thing I can tell you is that there has been a delay in Green Gold Group opening due to a stormwater issue and DOT has delayed it.
Okay. All right, um, let's see, student select persons report. Anya?
Hello. So, um, to start off, the students who went on the foreign language trip to Switzerland, France, Italy and Spain arrived home last night, Mr. Singer's daughter included. Shepherd Hill Junior Camden Haynes ran the Boston Marathon in support of Michael's Miracles, a nonprofit organization based in New Jersey that advocates for youth diabetes, and finished just under four hours. Shepherd Hill's designation, it was announced that Shepherd Hill's designation and two new innovation pathways will start in the fall of twenty nineteen for engineering and biomedical sciences. Brian Santos, who I've mentioned multiple times before, was named the Telegram and Gazette Hometown Athlete of the Year. And for the whole month of May, Shepherd Hill students will be busy with MCAS, lots of AP exams and SATs on the fourth.
Excellent, thank you, Anya.
Thank you.
It'll be nice. Other business unknown at the time of posting. Mr. Singer?
Just 'cause I couldn't find another place to put it. But I would like to request for our next Selectmen's meeting and the executive session, for our boards meeting with H R regarding some personnel issues.
Mm-hmm.
We don't need to have any personnel here for that meeting, will be required for that conversation. But I would like to have the opportunity to talk about some things with H R in the executive session.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Sure.
Also, through, through the chair.
Mm-hmm.
I, I know we've been getting a few emails about stormwater runoff or whatever. I don't know, if you could just talk about what people can do, who they should reach out to?
Okay, so they can either reach out to the Board of Selectmen's office or they can reach out to Cheryl down at the DPW, and she will get it into Jerry's hands with the, what the complaint is, and he will, he will address it. If it's a problem with, on the state road, which the only state roads that we have in the, in, in Chelten right now are Route twenty and the, and I ninety, the turnpike. Um, they would contact the district office, which is five oh eight nine two nine thirty-eight hundred, and they would say what their, they would tell them which, what their complaint is on the state roads.
Do you think we could put something like that on, on the website, too? The numbers, maybe more, pull it up front, have the webmaster do that? That'd be great.
Be a week.
Yes, yes. I've heard that before.
That's a standard answer this evening.
And, and one other, one other request through, through the chair, and I know it might be a week or two, it's okay. I know, Mary, you had created a really nice Excel file with, like, action items that are pending. It would be wonderful if we could get that again.
The to-do list?
The, the to-do list, yeah, yes.
Send it out after every meeting if you want, so you can see what's done, what we need to do.
Well, actually.
Perfect, that'll be perfect.
Sometimes you can just put it right on the agenda, too, just so we know what's pending, who's in charge of it or whatever. But just, because I know we have a lot of policies that are pending as well, and I just would like to kind of maybe tidy up and, but there's no immediate, or I don't want you to feel pressured, it's just.
You must on that?
I have to mention it, so, but within a month would be nice, but I, and, yeah, if you need help. But thank you, if, if everyone's in agreement for that. Yeah, anything I can do.
Okay, next meeting announcement. Annual Town Elections Saturday, May fourth, twenty nineteen, eight AM to eight PM at the Heritage School. The next regular Board of Selectmen's meeting, May seventh, twenty nineteen, at six thirty PM in the Selectmen's meeting room. The board is going to adjourn to executive session and, and come out of executive session for the sole reason to, to adjourn. So with that, Mr. Safarovich?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that we enter in executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation for insurance with union and non-union. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, then the Chair so declares.
And the Chair does so declare. We have a motion and do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Roll call vote.
Aye.
Mr. Singer? Yep. Ms. Noble?
Aye.
Mr. Safarovich?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye, and we will be entering executive session. With that, Joe Safarovich, thank you very much for everything that you've done for the town, and we will, you will be sorely missed. Thank you.
Yes, Joe, thank you. Are you gonna do yes? There you go.